Okay, we are all ready in line. Thank you, guys.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's joint county city informational meeting on the Dillon Military Bridge. I would ask at this time, if you haven't already, please silence yourselves. And as we go through this evening, again, this is an informational meeting. Want to hear what the public's opinion is on this issue. The city will go off of the agenda. At the end, they will, they can make a decision of what route they would like to go, or they can just delay and then process everything they've heard this evening and come back in tomorrow night's regular city council meeting or the one two eight town road. But that would be a council decision on what they decide to do later this evening. Everyone has a right to be heard. If you come to the podium, please state your name and also ask that you state your residence and address. You will be limited to five minutes. The only presenter that will be permitted to speak longer would be Melissa with H R Green. She still chooses because of what appears might be numerous people wanting to.
Hope you might want a little closer.
As it might appears to be might be numerous individuals that want to talk or voice their concern this evening. We are going to limit it to five minutes. Again, you have the right to be heard. I just ask with a room full of people, you know, to hear fifty people say the same exact thing. I don't know if that would be necessary. Council and county elective officials will probably be able to gauge your reaction and know if you're in favor of. With the one point zero roll call.
From?
Here.
Hey, Smith?
Here.
Tuken?
Here.
Wymer?
Here.
Dan Smith?
Here.
Gomber?
Here.
Note, all city council members are present in change. I don't need to do on technical plan.
Oswald, present.
John Zirkelbaum.
John Sloman.
Eric Hall, present.
Jeff Swisher, present.
This is not listed on the agenda, but I think it is. It needs to occur and would be fitting. At this time, we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under one God, indivisible, and created in itself.
Point zero update on the Dillon Military Bridge project. Here, I know you want to make some statements.
Yeah, so I'll try to keep this as brief, but as informative as possible. Basically, a history of this is simply back in fall winter-ish of 2021. The city council was made aware of the dilapidated condition of the Dillon Military Bridge. It was determined that some maintenance or repairs should be necessary. The city and the county then initiated a structural assessment of the dilapidated bridge that was through origin design. Origin Design came in in October of 2022 and conducted a preliminary field inspection. In the middle of that inspection, they determined that the cost of restoration would be well over a million dollars. They recommended no further assessment be conducted and no final report was provided. In October 2023, H R Green was contacted as a city engineer and tasked with initiating a Dillon Military Bridge project. Several meetings took place and several different directions were considered. In July of 2024, Majeski and Masters submitted a 2024 bridge inspection report. This was a thorough and comprehensive bridge inspection report. And they did issue a report for this and outline that due to several deficiencies, the uncertainty of the internal conditions of the trust pins, the bridge should remain closed to public access. They also concluded that rehabilitation or replacement of the above noted components would be cost prohibited and structural replacement is recommended. Once again, fast forward to May of 2025, several meetings and different options considered. H R Green confirmed that no additional progress could be completed on the Dillon Military Bridge until a definitive plan is established. Memo was provided outlining several different options, estimated costs, and proposed funding assistance. That basically brings us to this today. We've considered a few different possibilities and options, also open to others. Essentially, what we're looking at this time is a probable cost of rehabilitation of the bridge in place at 2.8 million, just over. A bridge removal and relocation. So we try to keep this historical piece of structure in our community, but is no longer over the river and functional at a cost of 883,200. Or a complete bridge removal, I think is the least favorite option, but it also is the least expensive at 264,000. And then H R Green did throw a cost of a probable construction cost of a new pedestrian bridge in at 1.824 million dollars. So those are kind of the options that we're working with now and just trying to get a handle on which which direction we go. Lots of pros and cons to each one, including next steps, future costs. How, you know, how often are we going to have to maintain this in the future if you retain it? So we don't run into the same problems that we're running into today ten or twelve years from now. Again, I just wanted to kind of give everybody an overview. I think we're all familiar with how important bridges. It also is going to cost some money, no matter what option we choose to go with. So just trying to get a good feel for all the different considerations that need to be taken into account.
Also, you have questions for here by that statement this time. Melissa, would you like to?
Melissa Klow with H R Green. I'll keep it brief. Jeremiah pretty much hit on all all the points. Just to recap on the estimates that I provided, we did assume the typical eighty percent federal funding. That would be potential funding with twenty percent local match. We did not include the consultant fees to be included in that, which I'm reaching out to the Iowa DOT and different agencies to figure out how we could do that. That usually involves some more steps. It's a little bit more cumbersome, but it may be possible. So that would bring costs down as well. To put together a funding package for this, we really need to know what direction we're going without having that direction of whether the bridge is staying or being relocated or removed. It's hard to define something to get the funding package pulled together and to get that money awarded to us. So that's really what we're looking for tonight.
Ma'am, you need to turn the microphone up.
Yeah. Yes. The microphones just do not carry through the room. It is just by our voice. The microphones are for the recording.
Okay. So I guess with that, I just explained how the funding applications would work. We need a decision made moving forward. That's what we're here for tonight. I don't know if any of you have questions on any of the information that was provided previously? Or if anything comes up as the meeting goes on, I can do what I can to answer any questions.
So.
One question. On option A, it says civil site work from trail and walk connections, 300,000. Is that to comply with the grant?
That is to comply with the TAP grant that we have secured already. That was secured for some trail work and it talking with E C cog, they would be amenable to redefining it, whether the bridge is rehabilitated in place or whether it's relocated. So that money has been secured and would be available for use. So if it is chosen that the bridge is removed, it would be likely that money would go towards would be redefined and go towards a new pedestrian bridge.
Was there a grant, grant money if you decided to go with putting a whole new pedestrian bridge in? Can you, are you eligible for any grants?
Yes, it's the state rec trails, the TAP, regional and statewide. All of that would also be available for a new bridge. With the historic structure, there may be some other grant opportunities available through Federal Highway Administration that we would have to work with DOT on and look into that. But a lot of the packages for historic bridges take time to put together. It's not something that happens overnight. So that's where we just, we would need the definition and then start working on filling out grant applications and and seeing what we can put together. So unfortunately, none of it's a guarantee.
Three point zero public comment. For this time in an orderly manner, if we could, those can make come up to the podium again, state your name, your address, your residence. You will have five minutes. Also, why the questions and comments are being directed to council and to county. I do ask that we refrain from any sidebar conversations so that way everyone can have an opportunity to hear clearly of what is being discussed.
Sure, everybody just about expected me to be here. I am Becky Hawkstead. I live at 305 North Huber Street, Anamos, Iowa. I am very interested in Anamosa history and have done several books, one for Martell, one for Anamosa on the history of our area. I have reached out to the Iowa Historical Society and D N R. I was under the impression when I had seen it many years ago in 2014, when that area was put right specifically Watts-Penney and State Park, that that bridge was also included in a National Historic Register places. And I am waiting for information to come back because I have not located my original copy. But in, so I have asked for that report to find out specifically if that bridge is included in that National Historic Register of places, if that bridge is included. It did include, I did find notes in the Anamosa council meeting minutes from that era that there was a discussion that some of the buildings on that opposite side of the river were included in that historic designation. So that being found, you can assume that, you know, they had to come across that bridge to get to those buildings. So I would like you to keep that in mind, you know, that it's that it's probably on the National Register of Historic Places. The bridge was placed in 1877, which we've all seen kind of history on the bridge, so I'm not going to reiterate a lot of that. However, it is only one of two bridges that that specific company made in the state of Iowa. The other one is down in Lyon County. The other thing that I have asked and reached out for is Iowa DOT. They have a list of Iowa historic bridges in their transportation website. They do not have this bridge designated as one of their historic bridges, which kind of surprised me. So I've reached out to them and asked them why not? Because in 1996, that historic report, which I have a copy of, if you'd like to have one, I'll be happy to make a copy and forward it to you of that report in 1996 for that specific purpose, for the Iowa Department of Transportation to put it in their registry of historic bridges. And so why it's not listed on the report, I don't know, but it looks like this. And I could pass this around, but I'd asked for it back simply because it's the only one I've got. And I guess the other thing that I would challenge, there are a lot of people in this room. There are a lot of people to expect someone to do something. We all know that it can happen. We all saw the Hale Bridge picked up and moved and replaced into a location other than its original place and completely renovated. However, that occurred primarily due to the the dedication and purpose of one person, and that's the late Rose Rohr. And many of you probably remember her and were affected by that project when that was going on. I wish I personally had the time and had the know-how to do that. I've just been selected as commander for the Department of Iowa for the state V F W. So I, right now, at this time, I do not have the time to commit to this project. If I did, I would. And I think everybody in here who knows me knows I would. And with that, I would challenge someone. We all look for someone in this room to stand up and help lead this project. It needs to be restored. It needs to be saved in some manner, whether it's across the water or on the trail. I just hope that we can can do it. Thank you.
John Dirks. All five East Fifth Street. Fifty years ago, I redecct that bridge. The city and the county, the only thing I needed from them there was permission. Everything else we did on our own. We collected all the money, paid for all the materials and everything. I would like to know why it's 2.8 million, the breakdown of what each individual part cost, the engineers cost, a second opinion from an outfit that repairs old antique bridges that deals with that. We all know that it's historical. The Dillon Pearl is the longest pearl on record, 86 miles. It was the first military, named the first military road in the state of Iowa. The Army Corps of Engineers on a public report, the Landis Bridge down there has to stay in place because it is eligible for historic value. One thing, that bridge, if I'm going out of the way, let me know. That bridge this winter had probably three or four inches of wet snow on it. Engineer may know three or four inches of wet snow on that bridge. Is that more weight than ten people weigh 200 pounds? That on that bridge, that bridge is built to support weight equally across. It's one of the few that has done that way. So is it three or four inches of snow heavier or the the ten people heavier? You want me to tell you? Inch of snow weighs approximately an inch of snow, a square foot round inch deep weighs approximately a pound. The square footage on that bridge is 2,560. Okay, what's the math on three or four inches of snow? Sorry. It's a lot more than ten people. So that bridge, it went through the Dreschel with 70 mile an hour winds blowing against it. It's still there. It had a foot of water over the top of it in a high flood. It's still there. We had during one flood, we had a green soft maple tree, fully leafed, come down the river. All green trees come down, leaves first, rutters at the back. It hit the concrete bridge first. Concrete bridge was a little higher. There was, I don't know, four to six feet of from the water to the bridge. That tree, we knew it was going to take the bridge. That tree hit that bridge. It made all kinds of groans and moans and cracks and pops and everything else. And that tree went underneath that bridge and rolled over the dam. And it's still there, but we can't walk across it. Sorry. Any more questions that you have for me? Thank you.
That reminded me, as much as I can appreciate a a good speech, let's please refrain from the applause. This is an informational meeting that was set up by the city with the county. So I would like for it to remain in the informational meeting.
Tom Durgen, downtown property owner. What Becky?
Please, we're trying to listen to Tom.
What Becky was saying about that bridge. And I believe I gave that to Jeremiah. Don't quote me on that, that it is on the historic register. I believe it is part of the park. And everybody up here obviously knows how I feel about this bridge. And like John said, it's been here forever. And I don't want to sit up here and repeat stuff because you guys, I've been in front of you guys a dozen times about this bridge. The historical significance of that bridge is absolutely incredible, let alone it is a military bridge. I don't understand why the 2.8 million. You know, I've said this before, you could cut the deck in a third, you're cutting that that cost in a third. No matter what we do, if you move the bridge, no matter what you do, I've said it many times, you still have to replace, you still have to repair the abutments to get another bridge across that, or you have to completely remove it and completely rebuild. You're almost at the cost of by the time you move, rebuild, replace, do whatever you're going to do, you're almost at the cost of fixing a very historic piece of property. Plus, that bridge, or the hell bridges put in, and somebody can correct me if they want to, was part of the trail system. The loop. And we have a supervisor that was on that committee and is voting against this. I don't see how that could happen. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Excuse me. Voting against this, we haven't voted on nothing.
I'm okay, let me back up then. So the county tried to go to two years on this agreement, which is renewed for five years, every five years. When I asked a supervisor why, and the answer was so we could keep an eye on it. That's a very ridiculous answer to me. You don't matter if it's a day or a hundred years, you keep an eye on it. That being said, everything I, and I'm gonna stop here for a minute because I really appreciate what the city has done. The city is really trying. I'll give them that. I might not agree with everything, but they've tried. But the county has been absolutely know all the way through. That's all I've heard is you guys want out of it. It's it's a shared 28 degree at one of the meetings up there. You guys said that oh, whoever did this, well, we all know who put this in the in the agreement together. And like I said there, they had the forethought to keep this and preserve it. I just, it's ridiculous and it is part of the trail system. I've said it before, I'm gonna say it again, somebody's going to get killed walking across that bridge. St. Pat's Day, there's, I don't know how many people going across that. People are coming down that hill. They're walking down that side. What's going to happen? You lose control. You're going to take everybody out on that side. I went home one day after council meeting. There's people sitting there with their coolers on the new bridge, as I call it, fishing, sitting in chairs. So something's got to be done with this. You guys have all known, I've talked myself into a corner with this thing and I'm gonna keep talking about it. It's got to be saved, my opinion. You got to do something with it. We got to make up our mind. And even if we do the abutments, and I don't know if this is possible, we'd have to ask Melissa. Do the abutments. Let's let's do a piece at a time if we have to. But let's get it walkable. And I, you know, here again, that's that's, I'm not an engineer. I never claimed to be. When I, when I dove that, we put this report together. I said right up front, I'm not an engineer. But something has absolutely got to be done with that. It is part of the trail. Someone's going to get killed on that other bridge. Thank you.
That bridge is so valuable.
Could you please state your name?
My name is Ivan Eden. And I'm at 412 East Fifth Street. Anamos. They, if that was that valuable, why wasn't it preserved as it was going along and some money be spent to keep it up rather than just wait till now and want to spend big while to save something that's worn out. I'm worn out, so I know how it goes. Are we going to save the Landis Bridge and move it somewhere? Are we going to save the Stone Bridge and move it somewhere? We've got bridges all over that need work. We've got streets in town that need a lot of attention. And they're not getting it. I can't see spending this kind of money to salvage an old steel bridge just and suffer on the other side of the coin with the streets we have to drive on and the bridges in the counties that aren't, there is any money to repair. So I would just like to have you keep an eye open on what it costs and what you're getting for what you're spending. As far as the trail is concerned, there's other ways they can go around that. I'm sure. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Heather Bendixson, 1009 McCoke at a straight. First and foremost, I'm sure all of us can talk about how many times we've crossed that bridge and played on it. So I just had a couple of questions. I'm glad the Hale Bridge got brought up. I grew up in Wyoming. So I was excited to see that bridge restored. But I also had questions about Central Park because I know we've got an old great bridge out at Central Park that we're keeping track of and making sure it's operational. But my other concern is maybe I know they're looking at those roller dams. And they're saying how dangerous they are, which they are. I didn't know if maybe we could tie something in because I know they're looking at getting away with those roller dams. If we could tie that in with the bridge when they're going to be working on that roller dam, so bringing it outside of the box. I know all prices have gone up. I appreciate your work on that bridge 50 years ago. That's awesome. Thank you. I don't know. We've got some great colleges and trade schools here in the state of Iowa. Maybe there's a grant that we can have some of our college students with some of their professors and engineers work with us to help restore that bridge. What an awesome story that would be for the state of Iowa. So anyway, my, yes, I want to keep the bridge, figure out what we can do, but just kind of thinking outside of the box on where we can get some of that money to assist. Thanks.
Hayden's Burnhart, Anamos resident.
Hayden's Burnhardt, Anamosa resident. So I grew up in Monticello. Couple of my family members grew up in Lynn County.
Maybe turn it.
I'm short. Um, anyway, so grew up in Monticello family I have out in Lynn County. I worked at Scotch Grove Bar for way too long, and there's been multiple people, multiple customers that we had out there. That had come in, and I was like, oh, where are you from? What are you doing? You know, whatever, making small talk. There's been lots of people. Coming out to go see the bridge, just coming to Anamosa, just to see the bridge. Like, okay, so obviously, somebody's making a point to come here. To come spend money at our local stores, shops, whatever they want to come visit here as well. So, I mean, I feel like that's a big price point for other people too. My next question I have. How much is it gonna cost to remove said bridge compared to replacing or fixing? Does anybody know?
Jeremiah.
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Remove it. Eight hundred and eighty-three thousand to relocate.
Okay. What's if, like, I don't remember her name. Talked about getting the colleges involved. I know lots of trade schools that. Want to help, need to learn as their students. Then my next thing in regards to this, there, I have a couple. Um, the other day I went, we went and ate local, had a restaurant in town. And saw crap ton of ci- city guys out on the streets doing plants. They do this every year. How much are we spending on that? Why aren't we doing ones that come up every single year instead of replacing multiple every year?
We don't spend money on that.
Okay. What about your city guys that are out there? Do we pay them? Okay, how much do they get paid hourly roughly?
There's also inmates that.
Okay, but the city guys are also getting paid. I know they're not getting paid chump change necessarily. And then the last thing I have to mention, I didn't see the girls here, so whether it's my place or not to mention it. I went to school with two of the girls that their dad took his life on that bridge. Your brother, he worked for the police department. How is, how are those girls gonna feel when, oh, that bridge is gone? That's where I feel my dad. What what do you think their feelings are? We use this bridge for military. I don't know how many people in here have served, done anything with that. How are they gonna feel? Just crushed with nothing left for them to remember anything here in Anamosa.
Name's Brian Nassif. I've lived in town. Now I live just a half mile out of town. I just have a couple of questions. Like the price to relocate the bridge to the bank, what was that number again?
Eight hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Okay, does that include restoring it to, I mean, if we relocated and put it on the bank? Are we gonna have to still bring it up to make it safe for people to walk on it? Or does that price include that? Do we know?
Sure, no longer would be, uh, the function of it wouldn't be the same, so there would be less cost involved with it. Now it's just a structure that would be sitting on the ground.
Okay, do we have that cost? Do we know? Um, because I was wondering, okay, what's the cost keeping the bridge? We need something crossing there, because like Tom said, people going across that new bridge. We don't have room for them on that highway coming into town. They're riding their bikes. I know they could go off of there, but they don't. So we need something where it's at now. We want to keep the Dillon Bridge because it's historical. Do we want to move it to the bank? And then, because you said that that was eight hundred and some thousand, what was the cost to build a new one?
One point eight million.
So if we add those two together. You know, to do both, move the one to the bank, build a new one. We're kind of covering all bases there. So I don't know, that's my opinion. We need something there, but I know it's a money issue. Thanks for your time.
Brian just laid out the difference would be about a hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yep.
And if we get grant money, which we're trying to do, or somebody mentioned that, uh, what's the grant percentage, maybe eighty percent? Is that what they said? Yeah. So what's our cost? What's Anamosa and Jones County's cost of twenty percent of that? Two point whatever million, two hundred and seventy? Two million seven hundred thousand then to do both, move it to the bank and to build a new walking bridge? What would Anamosa's and counties' twenty percent of that be? Do we know?
Yeah, that's based on the, um, the total factor though. That's kind of where we're at with it is we don't, we don't know what.
Yeah.
Get till we can establish.
Sure. Well, that gets us in the ballpark though. And then we're not talking about big bucks, so, I mean. You know, it's it's doable, but thanks.
Uh, Tom. We're, I'm giving one opportunity to generate your opinions and make them known, so I'm not gonna allow you to come back through. I hope you understand.
My name is Cindy Deesha, and I'm at four nineteen Holster in Anamosa. I can appreciate the sentimental, uh, attachment that everyone has to this bridge in, uh, in the town. And, uh, I'm not, uh, I I guess that's all I want to say about that. Um, my husband and I are trying to start a bicycle group from our church, Saint Paul's Church. Um, through the Wapsa Pinnikin Park and back in the Shaw Road, which that lovely bike trail back there, walk trail. And, uh, we're, we're starting it for, uh, ten to adults, uh, age. And we're trying to go on the back streets behind, uh, Tapkins, um, and then. Across the street that one time at Tapkins and go up the, the, um, black top that has been. Uh, made through there, uh, several, I don't know how long ago. And then, um, we need to get over to the park. So if we go that route, then we have to go back across E thirty-four. Over the bridge, back over E thirty-four, and back in through the park. It's dangerous, um, as you probably know, and we're trying to get young kids. Uh, interested in this. So, um, I hope to have a bridge over the Wapsa Pinnikin. My concern is not necessarily for the military bridge. I, however, I can appreciate your concerns and value for that bridge. But I would like to have a bridge across the Wapsa Pinnikin for bike traffic and walking.
Every time I say would like to make.
Levana Bosi, seven oh six South Burnerville here in Anamosa. I, from what I heard tonight, you know, you can't discount the, uh, historical value of that bridge. I know about everybody in here has seen paintings with that bridge in it. Uh, we do need a bridge across there to keep this safety for our pedestrians and to add some value to this community. And, you know, as Brian Nassif brought up, by the time you relocate that bridge to. The banks and take care of some structural issues with it, build a new pedestrian bridge. Consider new liabilities of having the military bridge on the bank. Which there will be liability and insurance, I'm sure, for the city. It it just seems to make sense to. Roll those into repairs, restoration of the existing bridge and keeping that in place. You know, that's a, uh, very, very important historical. Feature of this town, a visual feature and where it is and in place. As Tom spoke and John, I'm kind of old school the same way. I wonder, you know. What what is the scope of the cost of the repairs of this? You know, a lot of the structural truss pins, is there, um, huge amounts of truss pins that need to be replaced? Percentage wise, what would that be?
They were, they, uh, the bridge engineers were estimating replacement of all of this.
All the truss pins and, um. You know, the abutments, you know, I I look at that. And I, and I don't know what the condition is, what percent of corrosion or failure rate of the existing truss pins there is. Because that's a structural issue that's, other than the two abutments and the depth. Uh, of course, the recoding of the bridge, but, um, I don't really see any other cost to matter that the insurance on the whole project. But it just, you know, we had a dry summer a few years ago. I went down there just to see how bad those abutments were. I walked right up there and right away I think. Boy, I wish we had a boomerang or a couple of good old guys that we could just shore this and and put. Put earth anchors and forms and pour, get that structural back, but you're saying there's anchors, uh, the. Pins, structural pins that need to be replaced. But I don't know what, uh, to what grade they're deteriorating. Was that in the report?
It is, um, basically. They did ultrasonic testing of twenty-two of the pins, and all of them resulted in extreme attenuation. Which means scattered sound, so it's either cracked or.
Those were done in place.
Yes, yep. And so from that, um. They did a visual inspection of all forty pins, found visual cracks from five of them. So based on those two findings, that's where they said we should be replacing all forty. Of the truss pins, and it's about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and and the pins were removed and and that work can be done in place, can it?
Yes.
So I think once they got into, you know, that they'd have a real quick verification of that, and it's. You know, it it's, uh, tough thing to go into that, I mean, materials. I just think, uh, there were a lot, a lot of good ideas brought forth, you know, a lot. I think we could, I, I would encourage the community to pull together to keep that old military bridge and keep that history. Uh, do what we can, you know, as, as it was pointed out, it's just gonna be a pedestrian bridge. It obviously has to be safe. It's structurally sound for that. It has withheld a lot of forces of that river. Those abutments are about the worst of it, I would say, and then, uh, protecting it from going corrosion, so. I I would continue to look at that and, uh, try and proceed into into it for restoration of the military bridge. Thank you.
I don't know half of you guys. Um, but you probably know my husband Lynn. Me and my husband are cancer survivors. And the thing is, when the walking trail came up, it was a godsend, because I used to walk that trail in the street. Facing the cars facing me to make it safe, and it was nice. Because for me, I don't know about everyone else, this body happened because of laziness. And I use that trail because when I start my walk, I go through the bridge. Come up through the Wapsy, and then I cross up. I used to go across the old military bridge. And I loved it. It was a safe area. Now I have to continue to go to the main road, and that scares me to death. It scares me. I don't know what's coming at me from behind me. And I don't know if the kid or drunk driver or anything else. You guys talk about the value of the bridge and the cost of the bridge. But you never talk about the cost of an individual that might lose her life. Or gets severely injured from it and how it affects the community. Because the community is based on family, friends, and loved ones. We watch out after each other. We're there for each other. But when you're walking at times, I feel there's no one watching over us. No one's looking after our safety. And I'll tell you what, when I was able to cross that bridge, I felt safe. But when I get up to that road, I do not feel safe. I know I have to walk this route to stay healthy. A body in motion stays in motion. But I hesitate on my walk because I know I have to walk across that bridge, and I know there's a car coming up behind me. That zone where the safety zone is, is not a very wide zone, and you get someone on their phone. Or drinking or speeding. It scares me, and I'm sure it scares everyone here, and there's a lot of loved ones out there walking nuts. So instead of looking at the value of what it's gonna cost to repair the bridge, maybe you should look at the value what it costs to save a life. That bridge is worth the, worth the money spent for all the history and everything that that bridge has endured through his lifetime. Out of respect, we should keep the bridge and repair it and quit looking at how much it's gonna cost. We buy a police station, sell the other one. We need to spend our money wisely. This is a green zone. We have to continue to keep it as a green zone and make it more compatible for everyone to use these areas. Thank you.
I'm Connie McCain. I live at five oh nine South Oak in Anamosa. Uh, I hadn't really planned to speak tonight, but I just had a, a thought or two that occurred to me as I was listening. I wrote down the, uh, the numbers you presented for. Big numbers for, uh, the rehab and repair or the relocation or the removal. Or the pedestrian bridge replacement. Um, but I know sometimes projects can be done in stages. And I, with the two point eight million dollar rehab and repair, I just wondered if. Perhaps there was a way to stage that so that, um, the most vital things. Could be done to make the bridge safe and able to be opened for pedestrian traffic. And then, uh, if that was accomplished and the bridge was able to be used again, and a lot of safety issues had been presented. Uh, could future fundraising be done for the rest of the restoration? The, uh, the, the repainting and the deck repair. And and I, so I just wanted to get you thinking about maybe another scenario. Of of staging the project with the absolutely necessary things first and working with the community. Um, to make the rest happen over time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janice Cronewald. I've lived in Anamosa all my life. In fact, my father and my grandfather worked for the Iowa Electric Light and Power Plant down there. Each one forty some years. And we've seen the bridge quite often. And we've seen the bridge quite often because my folks lived right down by the bridge. And when my husband and I got married at one time, we also lived down by the bridge. And so that bridge means an awful lot to us. I can also remember John working on the bridge or down there fishing. And we, um. I'm, I think about moving it. That's an awful lot of money. And there's things around Anamosa I think you could use that for more. That's my opinion, but. I think it would be a good idea to fix the bridge, leave it where it's at. And just have a walking bridge. And it's, it's going to be hard if it's moved or tore down for me. And I'm sure for other people. Thank you.
I'd just say, I don't know if it's possible that the supervisors did a big buy-in on the restoration of this bridge. Uh, with some type of a, okay, then we'll let the county out for future. Maintenance repairs on you guys. There, there really has not been any discussion from the city and county. To date, we've both have worked really unilaterally. Uh, that's again, what, what this meeting was for is to become informational, get public input. Uh, and then attempt to mark, map some type of path. Uh, moving forward, whatever the decision, uh, is. Is there anyone else that would like to say something?
I was there assembly for thirty years at the high school. And this last year, uh, Ling was a shuker that laid one of the pieces of the, of the bridge at the Watsi Park. So my wife and I took, took five of the shuker, went out to see, um. To see Sean Myers' tombstone. And so we went through the park, we were stuck through the hole. So I got to those flights with seventeen shulks flying. We don't talk much, one shuker looking up sixty-five hundred hours. Those guys rushed their life. Lucky I knew Brussels and Asbers. I've been with four of those since, until the sixties, and I agree with them, it's empty things. I'd like to see the bridge stand and, and fix that on the same terms number one. So it's just a regular, it's important, that's true. I told the sheriff guys, I said, hey, Ling, I said, that's not the same bridge. I think we're talking. Ling said, yeah, I set this person up. Chad Meyer set this piece up. So it came, went to the, sent to, sent to Sean's tombstone. Wow, this is really important to these guys.
I work for Mercy and they had a habitat for communities who have come to our work at the hospital. And we had multiple employees go down there. They know the house in our parking. They moved the house and now. Unfortunately, family is living in that house. Why can't our community, you know, do that? Businesses like the hospital here. Why can't they come and do that?
What else? Just tonight is not a night to be bashful. If you have something you want to say, please come up. Mayor Smith, is it possible that we gave some type of a staged scope of work for repairs that. As several members of the community had said, would open it up to pedestrian traffic again. Like replacement, I would guess is the primary one. Melissa, are you prepared for that breakdown?
So the breakdown that we have on our estimate is for the pin replacement. And that is, that along with the abutment repairs is considered the most important. So the pin replacement is estimated to be a million dollars just in itself. For those, for the truss pins. The abutment repair and. Sorry, this is moving slow. The abutment repair and the roller pins that need to be replaced. I'm trying to get to this to explain it. I don't have my mouse. I apologize. Okay, so the bearings are fifty thousand, the abutment repairs are two hundred and fifty thousand. So the two main things that need to happen is one point three million. And then the, the remaining costs are items that could be done at another time. Pedestrian railings are on here for fifty thousand, um, so. There would obviously be some sort of cost to put up something temporary or reinforce what's out there right now to be considered safe. Um, the timber deck replacement is estimated to be ninety thousand. And one thing to remember, these are all estimates. This was put together a year ago. So there's also contingency on it because we didn't know when it was going to happen. Um, just with how prices are fluctuating right now, that's into question, so. We could design this and go out to bid and it could come in cheaper. We've had pricing on projects come in quite a bit cheaper this spring, but. It could also, things flip, then it could become more expensive, so. This is what our estimating is telling us. Um, the recoding of the steel, that could probably be done at a later date as well, and that was the last. Part, so that's repainting, cleaning up the bridge, and that was a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
How much was the total of engineering fees on that bridge, that project?
We, we took a ten percent across the board, so it was. With the estimate at one point. We had the estimate at one point six million with a twenty-five percent contingency. It was bumped up this spring just based on. Everything going on with the price of steel. Um, that put our total opinion of probable bridge rehabilitation cost at two million dollars. So design services at ten percent is two hundred thousand. We did add another two hundred thousand, ten percent for construction administration and observation. But of course, once we know what direction we're going and we do. We get more into that scope of services, we could see that come down.
Get adjusted. Would the, um, civil site works still need to be completed with just the bare minimum?
It doesn't need to be. Um, the civil site work is part of the TAP money though, because it provides a trail connection. To other trails and sidewalks in the area on the Anamosa side. That was part of the grant application.
But that would still be factored into your, your numbers.
Right.
Total costs.
Yeah. Yes, I factored that in now, but that connection could be put off. It wouldn't have to be done right away, probably.
You could mention an eighty-twenty split, I think. But. The eighty percent is presuming that we get some sort of. Grant assistance or financial assistance, correct?
Right, that's the, most federal funding is an eighty percent grant, twenty percent local match.
So.
State rec trails, for example, is seventy-five, twenty-five, but most of the others are eighty, twenty.
That's if we get.
That.
Total approval.
Right.
So.
We'd have to apply for the grant and receive it.
So as we sit here today. Eye on the sky is we get twenty percent. That, that, that. The local and the county government will be responsible. And the other eighty percent comes in through the funding that we don't know that we're even going to get.
Right.
Okay, so. That's best case scenario.
Right.
At one time, I believe there was a suggestion that perhaps the state would be the part of this. I believe I read minutes from the supervisors meeting that asks. About state helping and we told them we'll get back to you, I think, we know.
Well, that's where the grant funding comes in. That's, that would be state participation through. Funding that way. But no, I have, I've talked to the state historic preservation. Office, uh, I've talked to the National Park Service and they all have grants available. But again, it's a pretty competitive process and we would have to apply and, and see if our application was accepted.
Along those same lines, though, the DNR. Has basically washed their hands of any responsibility for that bridge, correct?
Well, so it is, the, the DNR and the state historic preservation office did confirm that it's on. The registry of historic places because of association be with the state park. Half of it sits on the state park. So state historic preservation association does see it. They acknowledge it's on the list. But the DNR does not have funding. To give, um, I've talked, I've had some emails with them and they have funding sources, but it's usually. You usually have to put in an application and it's years. Before they have the ability to use that fund.
So the DNR does acknowledge that they have some responsibility for this bridge?
They have not acknowledged that. They have just said that they've, they shared their funding sources with me and. It's not as much as we would think they would have.
How are we maintaining the hill bridge in some part? What, what's happening, like, the diapod guys, I'm speaking, I'm sorry, it's fine. But I'm just curious on that, like, how are we maintaining over this current? The state does for both of those?
No, county does at the central part.
County at the central part?
Conservation, conservations.
And then what company, like, do you guys check it out, like, how many, four years, five years, like?
Needs repaired too.
Okay, first, I'm just curious.
It will be closed also, probably. Could be, it's a possibility.
It's only open until the next inspection and then that, that inspection determines how long or how many, how much capacity, central part.
That's the, that's the grant funding that we really need to.
Right, I, we, we could apply to any of those, but it's fairly competitive at this point. They could get it. I can't guarantee that we could, but those are all on my list of what we would attempt to get. So.
I, I think the biggest thing you have to realize to apply for grants, to apply for any funds, have that plan.
Right.
And right now we do not have a plan. With stages and appropriations and money. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
What would it cost to put a pedestrian bridge new that, onto the new bridge upstream?
So.
Has that even been?
Yeah, we, we asked our bridge engineers about attaching or expanding that bridge. Given the age of that one, they wouldn't, then you'd have kind of a new structure connected to an older structure. And they had recommended it would just be more efficient to do a new pedestrian bridge next to it.
And your estimate was one point eight for a walking bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, normally, from what I've read, anywhere from five hundred to two thousand dollars a foot. Your estimate is almost nine thousand dollars a foot.
So the estimate, all of my estimates include engineering, construction, observation and then. Trail or trail headwork on both sides. So if you're looking at just the bridge, it's one point two million. Construction cost, so.
What is the low rate, low rating of the old bridge?
That I, I do not know. It did used to be a vehicular bridge, so. I would have to go back to Majescia Masters or.
The bins are for rated load, right?
Right.
The moving.
Right.
Right. Which is always down, it's rated, the low rating of that bridge, are the pins cheaper?
That I would have to ask. That I don't know.
Twenty-five thousand dollar pin.
Yeah.
Mighty expensive, or if the worst, worst of those pins, ultrasound, and if those pins are pulled. Actually, the money spent, they're pulled, examined.
And they're fine.
And replaced, yeah, they could, if the worst of them showing up. Except, but, they're, they're supposed to talk about a downgrading of the load because.
I do know with personal experience on new pedestrian bridges, they do recommend that it carries a vehicular load because of. Plowing and maintenance, and they also are requesting that they're wide enough in case an ambulance needs to access. Over the bridge or onto the bridge, so.
Well, last time, right, right, I saw a, quite a few bicycles, actually, there was like ten thousand bicycle. Not at the same time, but while that bridge was open, we also saw a car across that bridge. So, yeah.
So.
I just think, yeah, there could be more examination on actually seeing those pins that. That was a considerable part, it cost a million dollars to replace those existing pins and. You can definitely see how important it is, but, um. There's a better look, and with that, there are two, I don't know, if you're interested. You, you did get an invitation to the community, come down and voice their concerns, give you input on, on their interest in this. Know you got a sample from those speakers. I only heard maybe one. I only heard maybe one quote was so far, we're looking to show hands to see who was. Think saving this bridge would be something that the council and this supervisor should take with them, or.
Or, I think some people have an opinion that, yes, they should keep it. But here you guys are, being council, you know? Oh, we should follow what?
Does, uh, I think something that should be considered is the safety concerns. Crossing the river. One way to the other.
Yep.
I guess to begin to answer your question, the, the. Four point zero will be the discussion. Where the county, where the city officials begin to, uh. Lay and make a decision.
Mayor, I have one question for John Dirks. How many signatures are up there on that wall?
Four hundred and seventy-one.
Thank you.
And there's three places I can get picked up that there were those.
Becky, uh, did you have a question for me?
Well. Just that I, I wanted to point out that. The report that she is, um, talking about, anyone can access it online. And they can see all of the information that she had as it was presented. So the, the, the costs of two point eight million, eight hundred and eighty million, one point two million, they're all in her report online. You can get it and download it and read it, and it's very detailed. So, and I, I recommend if you're interested and you wanna know, read it. I agree with everybody else, two thousand five hundred is a lot for a pin, but of course, it's not a safety pin that holds your shirt up.
Right. Is the bridge closed down because of abutments, or is it because of the pins and the abutments?
I think, John, it's a combination of all the above. You know. With most things in life, you, you leave it to the experts to give you direction. And that's basically what the city did coming out of these reports, it was unsafe. Some of the common theme in here this evening is about safety, and I don't disagree with that. So if the city has aired in shutting it down, it is for the safety of anyone that would be accessing and utilizing it. The unknown is we don't know when something could possibly let loose. Uh, it has withstood, uh, as John has pointed out, the test of times, you know, with. Derations and significant flooding. Uh, but that's not saying that something doesn't decide to give way tomorrow and become catastrophic. Question, John, the, the experts told us it was unsafe, so we just shut it.
Right now, going out and looking at it. Especially the way you wanna. Fund this thing all the way through, and you wanna try to get funding sources all the way through, so you, you wanna do that, but. If you might, you know, spot and get a little weapon in the technical spins and think it's twenty-five thousand a piece and not two thousand five hundred.
And, Billy, in my private world. You, you take a look at what's available out there, what, what things will cost. And then you make a decision based on that. You gotta return in your investment in the business side. This works backwards in my world, this you gotta decide what you, what path you want. Then you can find out what's available. Oh, I don't know, I don't like that bus right there, I want it the other way, you tell me what's out there available for funding. And then we can make a more educated decision. But unfortunately. Government and funding don't work that way.
Hi there, Jeff Flola, uh, ten nine nine five, Paul's Court, Anamos, Iowa. Most of you know me, um, born and raised here. One of my questions is for you, I forgot your name. Are you, are you the engineer that came up with pricing and stuff? Okay, did we just have one engineer do this? Quote, then we didn't have anybody else get any quotes from anyone else?
City, uh, H R Green is the city's engineer.
Okay, so we can't go outside that and get quotes?
Well, keep in mind, the, the quotes would come on the bid letting process, all this is, is an estimation, just.
Well, my thought is when we all go out and buy something, we usually shop around, right? All of us. Um, why aren't we doing that? I mean, we just gonna go on a blind eye that this is gonna be it and this is the cost? I don't understand that. First of all, I'm in favor of saving the bridge, saving it right where it's at, repairing it, doing it in stages. Trying to get grant money, there's tons of organizations out there. That will help out and volunteer and do things. I work for a company right now, I worked for the state for thirty-five years. My brother Bill is in the audience here, both born and raised here, on that bridge, fish the bridge, walk the bridge, bike the bridge. Um, I like your idea about the, you know, doing it in stages. Um, I liked Tom's ideas, Brian's ideas, Tim's ideas, Bill. Um, John. So we really need to come together and save this bridge, I don't know about. The committee here and what your thoughts are, I'm, I'm hearing we're gonna heal that.
There's, there's discussions, um.
Okay.
Versus all public opinion.
Okay, and with all the signatures that we have, I mean, and this was in a short period of time.
Nine days.
Nine days, and we have those signatures to save the bridge, and I think from what I'm hearing, most of the people in this room wanna save the bridge. From what I'm kinda hearing, and I'm one of those, so I hope we do, thank you.
Tom, I'll come back to you again, I see you just, uh.
First, I, everybody knows how passionate I'm about this, I got a lot of time under. And on that bridge, I got a lot of time in and under the water on that bridge, so I'm very passionate, I wanna apologize for maybe a little snippy earlier. A couple of things, one, I have talked to, and I, I, I won't say who, cause I don't, um, they were, it's been about a year ago, I talked to a couple of major contractors. That were willing to help with what they could on this project. You know, depending on where we end up, I absolutely will talk to them again. And also, if anybody's ever out for a drive. South here, Benton Sport. Beautiful little town, they have a bridge over the Des Moines River, that this one looks brand new. And they got a five foot, that's why I say it, put, you know, five foot through the center, it's very well constructed, the bridge to me is horrible. But, uh, it's, it's, it's just, it's a beautiful bridge over to Des Moines, like four spans of this, I believe it is. Um, and one other thing, if I, if I may, um. Or with the, uh, the lady back here at the roller dam, the, my understanding is the roller dam is privately owned. The power plant just sold to another company. Um, I dove that last year, we're gonna dive it again this, uh, summer sometime, cause they're gonna do some repairs on that. So that's kind of out of, my understanding, it's kind of out of everybody's hands here, other than theirs, I, I don't, uh. Talking, and what I understand, there's no plans of ever pulling that out. Um, I'm, I mean, there's, you can do anything you want, but, you know, and they can still get water to flow through the power plant, but they do generate off that, so. Thanks again, thank you.
Uh, the question was, how long ago was the, the bridge closed to pedestrian? Twenty-two is what we're hearing. Joe Beetle, seven twelve, South Gunnarville Street. My question is, does the bridge have to be picked up and removed? Even if it has, if we're gonna fix it? Or can they do the repair with it sitting on those footings on the bricks? Okay. Okay. So in the meantime, if they would decide. My thing is, is that the time it's taking, I've, I've been on the other side fishing, and there's some really large chunks. Of brick that's missing from out underneath, you can see it's about to go. We end up getting, uh, a really good, maybe flood or two, in this meantime, where we're trying to decide what we're gonna do. If it goes in the river, then it's going to really cost. It's gonna cost, it's gonna be really stuck in there, and it's, it's gonna be an issue. So my next question is, has anybody thought that maybe they should come up with some kind of a plan to keep it? Keep the weight off of it in case those things. In case it, uh, some more bricks come out and then the bridge could go in.
That could be part of the phasing plan is to do the abutment first. Or sell that.
Well, maybe not necessarily lift it, but have some form of a supports under there in case more gets swept out of there. Before we have a, a good chance to, to start working on it, regardless if we, uh, uh, whatever the plan would be. Whatever, regardless of the plan.
I can talk to our structural engineers to see if that's possible. I can see that costing as much as just fixing the abutments.
And I can see that causing problems too, you're actually taking weight off of the existing abutments. And if anything. That could get even more unsafe, like, I think the best course of action is to determine, do we wanna save this bridge? Do we need a pedestrian bridge, the safety of the community? And I, I would say, let's get into fixing these abutments right away. And, and then go after the pins, you know, if it, it had another, if those pins. I would say if those two abutments are fixed, those pins are probably gonna be fine for a hundred years and a buck. You got, you gotta pull those pins and see and, and probably replace some.
Yeah, I would say just not to put, not to put pressure on underneath, but just have something there. If, if that was to be some, if that's a smart thing to do, I don't know. But, uh, if this takes too much longer, in a couple of good high water events. There might be a possibility.
So really stupid question.
No such thing.
So I'm hearing three million, let's just put a three million price tag on it, alright, let's just say. So city takes a million, county takes a million, we as a community. Figured out, certainly, fundraising, whatever, I don't know. The first person that throws a million in, whether it's the city or the county, because us, we're, it's gonna take us a little bit, for a reason why. But we do it in the stages of somebody's justice. We put the first million in and let's, let's get it supported so it doesn't float down the river. The second million comes in, whether that's from the county or the city, vice versa. And we'll keep it walking away and get you as much money as we can possibly do. And I think the entire county would pitch in and help. Anamosa, the entire county, the other young lady says, Lynch County comes down and enjoys it as well. Uh, we were just on today, Iowa, for the lemonade stand that we're gonna have in a couple of weeks. Everybody loves Jones County, Grant Wood, we can lean on it. Uh, but again, just a suggestion, uh, that way we've all got skin to gain.
Melissa, I have a quick question for you, could you? Put a copper dam in front of each one of those piers and pour a flow of material in there, just to support it for now?
I think it'd be possible. So. But again, I'm looking at the costs of rehabbing the abutments and. I.
I guess what I'm saying is not do, not to go completely up the piers, but go about six feet above the waterline?
I will ask our structural engineers and find out how much that would cost to compare to the abutment repairs.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'd have to work through the, through all that with the core. So.
Sorry, I asked a question, thank you.
Also, while you're up there, new question. Just, let's just say we take the option. Of rehabbing this bridge. What kind of timeframe we look at?
I'm fairly certain that they, they, the structural engineers said it could be done in a construction season. So.
I'm sorry, what?
Within a construction season.
That's, that's after you get the funding, correct?
Right.
Right. It would be after. But the actual construction would be about one year, but we still have to do bid letting and so forth, so a little bit, a year and a half. For completion, maybe.
That sounds about right, yes.
If we were to do the rehab and we do the applications for whatever funding sources, what's the typical wait time? From. Writing of the grant application to awarding of the grant application, cause that'll add to your.
Yeah, it's usually a few months, and then certain grants are only released. Like the state rec trails is out right now. And I think it's due sometime in July. The tap statewide set aside was in May, and we've already missed that one. So it would renew next year to, so.
Eighteen months is kind of a, another. Possibility, but it could be more like twenty-four to thirty.
Right.
Eighteen would be best.
Right.
Just was following up on the thought.
I have a question, uh. How long is a new bridge, a new walking road bridge, how long will it last?
They're, they usually have a thirty to fifty year lifespan.
Um, since the military bridge, we probably are creating them too. Have, I know maybe you mentioned it, maybe. What about the Corps of Engineers? Have you, did you mention them, was that something they could help with? If you ask military or maybe.
I have not approached the Corps about funding, I've, I've reached out to them just as far as hydraulics and. And any of that impact to the river. So I'm not aware of. Funding through them, but it would be another place that we could look.
Melissa, if we were to do it in segments that has, has been offered as a suggestion. These grants that we would be applying for. If we do it in segments, we're not gonna be able to apply for full funding of it. We have to reapply each time to get funding for each segment, correct?
That is my understanding, but I can, I've worked with the D O T and council of governments on packages. Where we work out that timing and so we could. Start talking about how that would be coordinated.
But cost of materials. Could go up.
Right.
Significantly, correct?
Yep.
And we're talking about timber. And. Well, steel.
Yeah.
Which are currently kind of the subject of some. Talk about higher costs, and we haven't locked anything in at this point at the estimates from a year.
Right. Yeah, our estimates are from a year ago, and just because of all those discussions and. Cost issues, that's where we went from a twenty percent to a twenty-five percent contingency.
And, and to be fair, I think it was mentioned earlier, why have we maybe not gone? And, and to be fair, I think it was mentioned earlier, why have we maybe not gone outside to have another engineer? Basically redo the same work you're doing. We won't know this until we, the cost until we let it out for bid.
Right.
So it, as long as the project parameters are the same, it wouldn't matter what engineer we used, it's going to matter what the actual bid.
Right. Our, our estimate is based on material costs that we get from the construction industry.
Why do you bring it up? I know we all remember the Hail Bridge and seeing it flying through here. That project took almost six years from the time it was slowed down to the time it was reopened as a bed and break. Six years.
Yeah.
We made sure that we made plans to when to put it back in place, six years.
And you're going for the grants that they would consider. Because there is such an interest in doing this in stages, but in trying to achieve the grant funding as a percentage of the total price, not to exceed H and R reads for for the funding grant. Not to exceed a specific amount that we are gonna pursue it in stages. The park side button, I would say, has to be done as soon as possible. Right now, and we can't wait six years for this whole thing to come through, you know, even if we're doing that. Then to be examining the pins on those trusses after both the buttons are fixed. And then they'll give us that fine fixed cost, hopefully we could get some percentage for grants, not to exceed.
Right. I, talking with other people at HR Green, we all agree that we would wanna apply for as many grants as we could for the full cost. Because we would likely not get that full cost, we'd just get partial. And then that could determine how much in that year we could, we could do and then reapply for grants as we know more about the bridge. So.
We, we need to commit to doing it, it's a community, we're not only getting, getting the grants for that total amount. It's been the question in there. I started addressing it, you know, those abutments, especially in that park side when you've gone down with the uh, of real structural concerns for the whole project.
We'll see, just thirty years to go, I don't want to. That's the number right now.
Yeah, thirty, I've seen some, that is like fifty.
Fifty years.
Yeah.
We're all gonna be gone. Let's face it.
If you're in Lita County, you can hear about, with the county doing independent, you know, bid or something like that.
County engineer happens to be here. If he wants to input on that or not.
County engineer looks underneath the direction board. However, secondary road funds cannot be spent outside the secondary road jurisdiction. Was that? It's not, it's not in our jurisdiction, uh, nor in the county structure, so we can't spend some of their road money by. Uh, we do need, uh, word from allocation outside those locations occasionally for recommendations and proposals and something along those lines. As far as engineering, we've been before this rupture, um, that was done right after the twenty eighty three was entered into, um, what is now Origin Science, they have planned the bugs and everything. The county engineer at that time, um, worked with that consultant. Pairing out some of the duties of the twenty eight, trying to work together. It was like designing the bridge.
If that was the county, if that was a county bridge Derek, we would hire somebody to design it as well.
We hired a consultant, right, a brand. And most of the time was in state to put a bid back together, to put together. An application, uh, we started right after we closed Long Island Bridge, uh, then we're, and there's some, we did get funding allocated for it, but, uh, uh, just, uh, three months ago, hardly got the last bridge, so. Feels that are pretty solid to a lot of the way here. You know, and get that, and we're still about to do the way the construction, the patient, you have. After that. We're all new bridge, we're gonna use one side, that's for all new, four years.
All right. We need to contact, and yeah, I'll have to say, but it's a good place. And, you know, so, I'm with the city. And we wanted to kind of that, the city was running around, they're here. All the sidewalks, I think, oh. Some of them are a little bit larger. Some of the facilities, some of them are not, they care of their sidewalks. They're just able to. So. I feel much safer walking around residential area, even if it's on the road. Than hitting up this road where we all know that people are speeding down the street, oh, right by the park. That's why there's this big sign out there, acting our fees. So, you know, you know, for residential areas, you're going twenty-five miles an hour, people don't know, so. But she does see easily. So. Why can't we be, for, for nature? That's where, yes, if we walk into the central area. They know they just have to walk on the road. You're gonna be able to pay more attention to concrete being on a little bit more than a car coming and any.
I. I don't know, but I'm going to make an assumption. There is no elected official sitting in this room before you receive me that does not care about public safety. I'm sure I got to believe they take it and it is in the forefront of all of the decisions they make. Uh, so I just, I want to state that it is real with this, with the council and with the county supervisors, the public safety. One of the reasons that Walk Bridge was shut down because the, the unknown was, was there, you could not predict what the next day was really gonna bring, whatever. And the experts had indicated it was unsafe. So, I, I, you know, just keep in mind that the, the council and the county will always take into consideration public safety when they are finalizing the decision.
Well, open. Mike Dearborn, Anamosa. Uh, just a couple of quick things here. We all remember this funding campaign we had for the Shaw Road Trail. And it was a big deal. Uh, and one of the points, probably one of their main points, I, if I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, was it was gonna be a complete loop, it was gonna be a, a, a circle trail all the way through the park, back through, and you can make your way through. Uh, I don't have an opinion at this time, newer old bridge. But what I do want is, is a bridge. And one of my questions is, when we got funding here, a lot of us donated money and effort towards that fundraiser. Was there some grants, government grants involved in that? Maybe your county guys know more than that about it. Was there any, uh, contingencies as far as you had to complete the loop on that?
So Mike, at the time, the loop was completed, the bridge was open until they deemed it unsafe by citizens looking at it. And so it got, the loop got closed, but also part of that loop was the rest of the sidewalks through town.
Second Street?
Yeah, so where, where was that loop gonna go? Up the street? I see a lot of people walk, you know, walk right up the middle of the street, so, you know, to put that on the Wopsi Trail Committee, to put that on me. Excuse me, there wasn't a looped, there was a loop, there wasn't a loop through there, so.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, what I'm getting at is, are you open to having to give money back because there's no loop? If, if, if you just take that bridge down, that's, that's one of my.
There's no, there's no contingency.
There's none?
No, I mean, why would there?
Well, it looks funny that way, when they, when they give you money, they give you stipulations.
Fed side.
Yeah.
This is state. And there's a lot of that funding that's gonna get channeled through here with the, the new sidewalk and that street skate through there, so. That was part of the TAP funding. I've been on the UC Cog board for going on eleven years now and I've listened to all this and the DC cog this and that, I actually sit on that board and part of the trails and, uh, DOT Policy Committee as far as where some of that funding goes, so. Yeah, I know.
Okay. One other concern I have is some people have come, and no offense, but some people are just speaking so lightly about the money issue of this, you know, like eight million here, a million there. I've sat in these seats, guys, it's a big, big deal, it's gotta come from somewhere. And, uh, one of my questions is to Melissa, at this point, and I know you got your ten percent feed, I understand all of that because I've been through it. But at this point, what, what do us city taxpayers have invested so far in your engineering fees? And before you answer that, whatever that amount is, will that be absorbed into the ten percent if we do go with the project with you?
So we currently have agreement with the city to do, to work through conceptual planning.
Yeah.
So that's already been approved.
And what cost?
I, I honestly don't know, I don't.
Mike, we have a master servicing agreement with HR Green, they're basically the city's contracted engineer, so it's no different than in service.
Do, do.
We're paying them to do all of our engineering.
So you're saying that this isn't singled out?
No, right, well, it is depending on how many hours are worked on it or whatnot, but it's, it's part of all of our projects going on. And then if it goes beyond conceptual designs into planning and construction and so on, then the project is formally kicked off under a new agreement and we start.
Yeah, I understand that, but do you think that you've got additional fees already invested right now? In addition to what, I, I'm saying, you, you've evidently put a lot of thought and effort into this already that you wouldn't have if you didn't, if you weren't asked to do it. So you've got some extra fees, you know, I, I'm assuming, correct? I mean, other than what you're just, the city's paying you as a, as our engineer, engineering firm. You, you know, a few years ago, you didn't have this on your plate, now you do, you don't do it for free.
We have an agreement for the bridge where we subcontracted with Majeski and Master, who came to do the inspection. Then our engineers looked at that report and made, they came up with the estimates. They made recommendations of, these are the options and that's why they're still here, we've not started on any conceptual design or anything yet.
So the last of my question is, anything that you do have invested in this? Would those be absorbed into the ten percent overall project fee when the time comes, if and when the time comes?
There is a good chance, I mean, we have a current agreement, we will be right now, so. I mean, it would be our work would continue into that next agreement, so if another firm got it, there'd be a chance, they'd have to go back.
It'd be a, so it'd be included in the ten percent engineering case, okay?
That's ten percent usually covers preliminary design.
Okay. But if, but if we didn't go with the project, we'd always use money. Right? If we didn't go with whatever, and you were no ten percent fee to you, you'd still have to come back and collect these, these preliminary, no?
We submit and makes this hard work.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I have one question on those abutments, I know it's a cast in place, uh, repaired new abutments, I know what's down there, and there's stones that they're probably not using.
That? I do not know. I would need to. The abutment repair process would involve installing new micro piles in front of the existing abutments. And encasing the existing stones in reinforcement.
Did you at all figure anything from what it would take maintenance per year? To maintain this thing, so in fifty years, you're not spending another half a million or a million on?
I believe our bridge engineers looked into that and it's not in a report that I have, so I can ask them.
Thank you.
Just to record, I heard somebody mention doing fundraiser in the past, back to John and myself, we discussed that. James would say he's busy, I don't know about John, I used to support him. If someone wants to step up.
I'll suck up that.
Because I, I'm older than you are, you can't do it, I can't do it.
Alright, we're we're just shy of a couple hours in. Uh, by my tally, I've got sixteen people, uh, come and inquired, uh, I'm gonna figure there was one that was opposed to re, repurposing, replacing, and a new, what's fifteen in favor? Please, county, are you okay if we did take some type of survey this evening? Just to get a full understanding of individuals in this room, uh, where they lie in favor or opposed to uh, an expenditure on this bridge?
See, to what, ask the audience this evening? To which plan they wanna do?
No, just are they in favor of, uh, maintaining a bridge over the Wopsi or opposed to it at all?
No, I'm probably not.
Council?
Sure.
Alright, I think tell you in this line of work not to do this, but I'm no venture. I canvass the room. Those that are in favor of a structure over the Wops that is not a vehicle bridge, please raise your hand. I'm not gonna count, that's quite a few. This one might be the easy one to count. Those that are opposed to throwing any money at this at all, a bridge of any sort, please raise your hand. What do we got? Is there? Is there any other comments that wanna be made this evening? Uh, for county and the city, uh, go into a discussion because at that point, uh, we'll, in a sense, shut that side of the room now.
Oh Rod, I'd just say that people need to understand that this isn't a city of Anamosa project or a Jones County project. This is a public project, you know, the state of Iowa, someone mentioned RagBri. You know, the state of Iowa, someone mentioned RagBri used it when it was open. So lots of people use that bridge and have for forever. And I would urge. In in your consideration that you broaden your thoughts to the fact that it's a state of Iowa, state park. Facility and a military bridge to boot. And. With funding that's available and there's been, there's other sources out there that we haven't even discussed that are potential funding sources. That could lighten the the load for repairing the existing bridge in its current location. That's all I got to say.
So. Just for clarification. Potential? I'd rather use the word possible because un- until this, the city and the county decide. The map, the path they're going to go. We don't have. We we have an an idea, but we don't know what will become available as far as funding. Uh at at this time. This is a two dog race with the city and the county. Those are, they're, they are the two entities that are gonna be left in a sense, holding the checkbooks on this. Wasn't all that long ago, it was a three dog race in the state of Iowa is basically. Signed a document that said they are resolved from this. So. The the expense is going to be at the city and the county. That's just the way it's gonna be. Uh hopefully, there is other revenue sources. Funding that is available to begin to lighten the check that those two parties will have to earn.
Can I see the document that the state signed?
Uh it was. It was made available at one time to all of us, Chris.
I've never seen it, so I just wanted to find out. I have a twenty eighty. See the top part of that. I think that was much. So.
We'll go get that for you, Chris. All right. So with that, I'm gonna end three point zero public comment. Four point zero, city, county discussion and possible action on the Dylan Military Bridge. Where do we go from here?
Look at the wall.
What was that?
I'd I'd look at the wall. There's a lot of names on there for nine days. Now.
I didn't know.
Now that doesn't affect the path, just think it needs to stay. In the community.
Well, that that is sort of picking.
Hey, please, no, don't talk. So we can conduct city county business. Thank you.
I'm gonna go how. I would be on the record. I don't wanna get rid of a bridge just to get rid of a bridge. That's, that's never been in my agenda. Uh. I absolutely have concerns about holding the bag. At the end of whatever decision we make. I appreciate all the discussions tonight. But as Mayor Smith pointed out. There's two sources of funds right now that we know are in this room. And depending on how each. Counselor Board. Makes their determination as to whether they're in or whether they're out. The one constant is if we say we're gonna go down. The restore in place. And we don't get funding. Close to the eighty twenty split. We kind of put ourselves out there as. Obligating ourselves to complete or put a project in place. And. As a city council person. I'm aware that there are things that we're gonna be talking about in the future that don't include just the bridge. But there are other things that our limited resources are going to be pressed into service. So. Those are my, that's my concern is what are we ultimately gonna be footing the bill for if we agree to? Whatever route. And I appreciate the fact that there's four hundred and seventy some signatures in a nine day period. That that. This Dylan Bridge project, since I've been on the council for roughly eighteen months. Um. It's been a subject of the city council meeting at least once a month. Nearly every month I've been on the council. Because it is important. And I would echo Mayor. Smith's point that there's not anybody that's sitting in. In this area here that I know of that is. That doesn't take safety. Serious. And so. It it is something that has been on the forefront of my mind since I've been on here of. What are we gonna do to keep that bridge safe both for pedestrians as well as? When when any of that eventuality occurs that the bridge? That 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 we have some catastrophic catastrophic event where that bridge ends up in the river. As a city resident. My taxes. I pay city taxes and county taxes. So I've got a foot in. I've got an interest in how that money is spent, both as at the local level and at the county level. County supervisors have county taxpayers that are paying into into their fund. That I think they are considering that as well with regard to how we're spending the money. I'm, I am concerned about how we're gonna.
I keep going back to the math. If we do remove that bridge versus rehab it. We still have to put a pedestrian bridge across that river. And there's not much difference in price between rehabbing. And removing and putting a new bridge in. That's kind of where I'm at this. If you're worried about money.
I'm just putting it out there, no matter what decision we make. It it is going to be an expense and if, as Mr. Dearborn pointed out. A million dollars here, a million dollars there. That's, that's easy for us to talk about, but it's not. I mean. It's a lot of money there. No matter what we decide.
So. We have a meeting, a public hearing meeting every year with property taxes to set the levy rate. This year it was four. It was one of these here. You were there. Talking about Jones County's got one of the highest levy rates of all the counties around. So we're getting pressured on property taxes to try and do more. We have to be lower. Within two years, we have to lower our levy rate from about four oh six to three fifty. And we're. We, our department heads have done really well with a zero percent increase. Um. And. We're looking down the road in ways what we are gonna have to let go of to get to three fifty. So. We. We, you know, I don't think there's anybody here that our board is against safety for sure. But we have to figure ways to pay for things also. We have a bridge out there, Landis Bridge we're replacing. We were lucky enough to get a grant that's gonna pay for. Seventy five, eighty percent of it, but we still have to put up about one point eight million towards that bridge and that's for vehicle traffic. So. We have a bridge that's shut down right now by Stone City. We have to fix. Uh we have a couple other ones that we put load ratings on that we have to figure out what we're gonna do on them. So you guys are in the same boat. We are trying to figure out how do you pay for these things, you know, so. It's not that we don't care. It's how do we pay for it? And that's why I think we have to put our heads together and figure out what's the best path. And uh. Start looking at how to do it, I guess, if what works, I mean, it's financially. Number one, safety's number one, but also you still have to pay for it. You know. Three million dollar deal, that's a pretty good chunk if you don't get a grant. The county's gonna be on the foot for one point five and the city's gonna be on the. That's a lot of money. Uh. You know, we. We sat here a couple years ago, had this discussion and I I probably got in trouble over it, but it's still a kind of an odd deal that we've got. City. State. And somehow the county got put in the middle of that. Most times you have two property owners on one side and on the other, and we got in the middle of it. State that should be on the hook is gone. They pulled out of that agreement. So we are in an agreement on property that. I'm not even sure why we're in the agreement, to tell you the truth. Um. We. We're on, we're in an agreement. We need to. Trying to figure out a way to work through it, so.
Yeah, I notice how they interpret. Is it possible that? With this much community interest in supporting that the state is approached for funds with. With no interest in that, we are going to take, you know, that we we could bond for the. Monetary, uh, the gate election and a special election, but is it possible to approach the state? And just to to get additional funds, because you do have a lot of commitments for roads and bridges.
So we can bond for it and go to vote, but it would have to be during a regular election. There's no special elections anymore that I'm aware of.
Which I would be in favor of bonding, but if we're gonna do that, John, we need to put Stone Bridge on that as well. And also the bridge out at Central Park that we're all mentioned and they all, they all need to be on that bond and the whole county would need to vote for all three, not just one.
Which, you know, five hundred signatures is a lot of people, that's no doubt, but Jones County's twenty thousand people.
Give me a month, I have all the time.
I know, but I'm just saying, uh, you know, I I've talked to people about Stone Bridge and people from the southern end of the county, they don't care. You know, it's, it's, if it means something to you, you're for it.
Okay. In a hundred and thirty eight years, I wonder how many people walked across that and had fun on it and everything else. Don't, don't live in the state. And don't know anything about what's going on. If that was put out nationwide, I would. Yes, there would be a. Quite a few people interested in it.
Well, John, I guess that's not the issue. The issue is how do we fund this? How do we work through this? Um, we were told by our elected. Officials further up, representative state senators. That we were spending too much money. We gotta cut the fluff. There's needs and wants. Um. You could argue what way this is a need or want luxury. Necessary both ways. That's, that's where we're at now and. You know, I guess if people wanna vote to raise their taxes, that's up to them, but uh. I I'm coming from the supervisor side of it. I mean, we speak for all the Jones County. And, you know. How many, how many people in this room are from out of town? On the mic, jam. Didn't it? So. Small, I'm proud about addresses. So small percentage, I mean. And that this comes out in the paper, the phone will ring and those are the ones we hear that say, don't spend any money on it, so. So to be fair. Yeah, bond issue for these other projects, don't, you know, before we could commit. We've had Stone Bridge on, that's been ten years, eleven years, that's been closed. One of the first things they did when they got on the board. And that's a tough one. There just wasn't any money for it. And then the next one is uh the bridge out Central Park. I was just out there Saturday night, you know, people walk across that back and forth. It's kind of a big leg of what they do out there. They'd like to hook a. The trail system to it around that pond or lake and uh. So for us to say. We'll spend half million, a million bucks on this. That ain't fair to those other two projects we've had going in the past, so. There is a liability on Stone Bridge and the one. So the one at the bridge at Central Park, go out there, look at it. It looks good, but. I'm not recommending this, but if you could look up underneath there, really ugly underneath there. Um, there is a sign there. That bridge has been inspected recently. And that there's a sign there that says a hundred and fifty persons is the max. That was put there because there's weddings and all kinds of stuff that goes on out there. Um. So that is good until the next time. Inspection is required and. Well, it don't get any better, so the the. You look at the abutments, they're just posts stuck in the ground. They're crushing, falling apart. So that one. They come out and look at it again, probably the likelihood of it getting close could happen. Well, they have to go. Way around. And cross the main road through there and you've all, most all you've been through there, that narrow causeway down there. I mean, they go all the kids bicycling and walking across there too, so. To speak to safety, there's a prime example coming from me, so.
What's, what's the state's reasoning back and how uh funding?
They don't have any money, probably. Look at the rest of the park, drive through the rest of the park. Don't stick your tongue out when you hit them bones.
Or landis freshman, say, we not.
Federal, that's a federal, that's a funding project, federal funding.
Again, just to clarify, that it isn't like the state. Would not offer funding. As far as, you know, grants uh that would be available. When we talk about the state has removed themselves from. Any financial obligations to the bridge. That has now been left to the city and the county via the twenty eight liberty. But. Again. The the DOT, the DNR, it all falls with under the state of Iowa umbrella in a sense. Uh so though, you know, we could possibly tap those areas for funding. But the state, you know, you take this. Two point eight, let's make it three million for easy numbers. If the state was involved, that's a million dollars per entity. They're not involved, that's why it's a million five for the city and the county.
They don't have an ownership interest in the, in the property, so that's why they're out.
Because the twenty eighty agreement does state. That the bridge shall be considered to be owned and controlled on an equal basis by both the city and the county. And they both signed off on. So they both agreed that there is ownership in that bridge. Doesn't say anything about any other entity.
How many years ago?
That was one of the twenty eighty, ran two dollars twice in two thousand and eight.
The original agreement.
Two parties, who's the tiebreaker between the city and the county?
Well, there is no tiebreaker. We have to agree.
We'll arm Russell for it.
That's come from this. State pool of money through fuel taxes and stuff like that.
There's local money as well.
I have a question. If we raise local money, I mean, we're not gonna come up with a million dollars right away. But if we raise local money. Where do we give it to, to put it in a pot for this project?
So Becky here, um. Historic preservation is working together, working on the Stone Bridge. I feel your group or whoever, you need to come up with something like that. A ringleader. Sounds like Mr. Bonifaz has got a lot of answers up there. Maybe he ought to be, so. Well, you're first one to ask him too, so. Um. So there's a group that's. Spearheading that. And uh I feel you guys should have one of them. So you have representation because otherwise you just get them in a room like this and all you got is just a bunch of. Suggestions and whatever, so.
Todd, we have a question for you guys. If we get to the point of agreeing on. Some way to proceed. Are you in agreement to? Do the fifty fifty?
My opinion. I would, I'm not speaking to these guys. I think once this bridge, wherever we land on, I think once it gets to that point of being completed. Then I think the county should be out. Because I don't know why the county is gonna begin with, when you got two landowners on each side. And the county's not one.
I think what Rich is asking, are are we in agreement to pay our?
Your fifty percent of whatever. We decide to do going. On whatever we do, whichever option is stated. Are you in agreement to pay your fifty percent?
I think we're in agreement to let the. Voters decide that. Make that decision.
Could go for bond in November.
So even if we. I don't, and I'm just throwing this out here because I know it's not the option I want, but say remove the bridge. You're still not going to commit to your fifty percent of that removal?
I think by advisement of our attorney, that isn't part of our agreement. The repairing of the bridge is part of our agreement, not removing.
Okay, so if we go to repair. Are you going to agree to the fifty percent of the repair?
John just said, look, he. If you, if the people of Jones County are bored. And I think. I think. You better let the whole county vote on that dollar, no?
So there's there's really two issues here, I'm sorry, that'll come later, representative city. There's the issue of whether we'll agree to split the cost of what is decided, that's the first issue. And the second issue is whether we spend any money at all, because one possibility. One extreme possibility would be to conduct it, right? Which is probably not very good because it falls in the river. Then DNR is gonna come to us because of the flood point violation, and they're gonna see the twenty eighty that says we're joint owners and say, both you guys need to do something to get to some river. So. Close to that extreme would be to just cut the bridge up and remove it, which is the cheapest option we have, right? What I, what I think what the city is trying to say is if we can get to an agreement that will go fifty fifty remediate, but no commitment at all as to any dollar figure. At all. Because nobody knows enough to know whether they can commit to a dollar figure tonight. The Jones County taxpayers don't know what that would cost, so. The Board of Supervisors sitting there saying, we have no idea really whether that would be palatable to any of our voters. Right? City's got the same problem on its side. It could be decided that if we all agree tonight, we'll go ahead and split fifty fifty, we'll agree that we're joint owners like the twenty eighty says. We could just agree to that. And then say, we'll explore all options and get back to the public on whether anything's feasible to do at all. That to me seems like the two logical steps legally that we should look at. If. If it's the county's position that absolutely not, under no circumstances do we agree to twenty eighty says for a joint owner. Then. The city's gonna be stuck. City's gonna be sitting here saying, well, somebody's got to do something about it, it's a public nuisance. We probably have to head to Jones County District Court, see if the judge would say. Is that a joint ownership because there's admission in the docking? But we don't wanna do that. We think that would be just, you know, if, because it really, it seems to me that the public question is whether we even have the money for it. Right? That's what I hear the county representative saying. We don't know if we got. With the changes to the levy, I can understand the county's position. The county is in is in a difficult spot because you have to reduce. Your spending because you have to satisfy the new edict out of the legislature. I understand that because that would deal with the likely party. But it seems to me that a fifty fifty split ought to be an elementary agreement to start with, and. Everybody reserves their objections to spending money at this point, because we have no idea. All we have is a basic estimate for our engineer. As to what it would be to repair, that's it, that's all. And I guess we have an estimate of what it might cost to cut it up even really. We don't know what the grant funding is gonna be.
So the board is going to follow the twenty eight year bonds. And I I agree, that that that's the advice I'm going to give. We we have to follow the twenty year good faith. As long as the twenty year is in effect. And so we absolutely, I would advise them to do that. Uh, but. That's what already says, so I mean, I I guess, um, I don't think either district or county are good to say that, but at the same time. I like your point. I think that's quite dangerous. We still don't know what that obligation is, whether it would grant it or not, like, and that's why it's it's a tough situation back for everybody. Because I I do, I mean, I believe that we're coming out of the river. That they want this rate to be paid and and. But we don't, still in the system, we don't know what that costs. And when we know what costs, we don't even know. What our shares would be, we're going to split, we're going to, that's hard, because neither the city nor the county. Has one point five million dollars, you know. And and that's the problem.
Right. Why why can't we say, let's just say. Both sides agree. On moving forward. If we get a grant, can't we? Do that? And if we get a grant. Sixty, seventy, eighty percent. Then each party only has to come up with that ten percent. If we don't get a grant. Then we're back here where we're at now. Is that possible to look at that? Because if we get a grant. That answers a lot of questions.
There is no one single grant. That was the funding. Up to eighty percent of the two point eight million dollar. There's numerous that you would be tapping to accumulatively get to eighty percent. But what what's the city and the county really have to. Uh, face is. They are the checkbooks.
Period.
Not not, not the grants that could possibly come our way. You're gonna commit to. The the refurbish of the bridge. It's right now, it's approximately two point eight million. And that's one point four per. Uh, so in in. So your comment, Chris. I will build the elephant in the room, or maybe it's the heartburn. That I'll have. There's a sunset date on the twenty eighty agreement. I really get the feeling that. Before this project. Comes to a fruition. There's a basically a shovel in the ground. That twenty eighty agreement is gonna expire. Then. Who's all the players in the game?
And and. To bootstrap onto that. If the twenty eighty agreement expires. And if we're waiting to put something to vote. On the election in November. We wait until the middle of November to find out whether it whether. A bond issue passes. And we still have done nothing to determine whether we're gonna take a bridge apart or whether we're gonna put a bridge. To keep the bridge in place. And Melissa, I think, mentioned in her, one of her parts of the presentation that. Minimum eighteen months to get from. Grant. Writing to. Project completion, and I asked her if that was realistic. But now it it's. It's June ninth. So we've got another. Four months, three, five months before we get to election. So now that project that was somewhere between eighteen and thirty months now has turned into almost three years by the time we get all of this collected. Um, and in the meantime. What? I understand. The engineers to say is. In order to figure out what we're going to do to apply for any funding, we have to make the decision as to. A, B, or C. Before we can start the process of applying for a grant, so in. In five months, we're still gonna be sitting here. With the twenty eighty agreement, it's gonna expire, then. We're still back to, we haven't moved the ball forward one way or another. We can't ask our engineer to go out and start it. Putting applications out for funding sources without knowing whether we're gonna do A, B, or C. And so. It it's it's. Kicking the can down the road again, and and as the mayor points out, there's gonna be one dog left. Holding the bag. At the end of this project, and it's. This group right here.
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Frustration, you know, I I I. The frustration that that I hear in the studio budget from the other fifteen thousand people in the county. Is that for thirteen years, this thing was in existence, the city didn't take the lead to like prepare it or maintain the bridge, so I understand. That the city was finding itself in that situation, I understand, it's unsettling this. This is what I'm actually trying, like. They're not able to to point one one. But it wasn't, it's hard to tell how many people it's on this thing.
It is an agreement between two entities, and 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 I I I I'm I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a little bit of issue.
God, read it, read it.
I I have read it.
The supervisor brought me that twenty eighty agreement, but I took it to the city because I think the supervisor was worried they were getting stuck with all the things. Well, it isn't a great, it isn't a fire. Chris, can I ask you a question? The county. Acknowledged they had ownership of the bridge. Half of the bridge. They acknowledged it in the twenty eighty agreement, correct?
It it establishes that. I don't know.
Well.
Establishes it, but it also has expiration dates, so.
Correct. But even there's there's an expiration date, you still have ownership.
I I disagree with that. I really do.
I I would take issue with that, and I think the court would.
And and and.
Two parties making admission in public in our public documents, and they say, we we agree we're the owners. Agreement can expire, which means the terms of that don't lo- no longer apply, but now we have a public nuisance with two people that own it. What do you think the court's gonna do? The court's gonna say. You guys are both responsible. It's a public nuisance. You both admitted you owned it in a public document, which got filed in Secretary of State as an official document. Official admissions by both parties. So. We wanted to move forward quickly on this. We should admit now that we have a fifty fifty responsibility. And simply reserve all of our obligations as as to the things.
I now understand why we're having this speech, but I I think it's important to, again, read the agreement, because it says it's a reason that the bridge should be considered to be on the end of the line. That's part of the general agreement section, so for the purposes of this agreement. Were considered, that doesn't create an obligation, it's an obligation for repair means. While the agreement is in effect. And and I agree with that, we agree on that. But I don't know that that would be any. And I'm going to be like, I'm wrong about that. But I don't know that you're right. And and why you know is that if you sit here and I guess the county has an obligation to repair and maintain this bridge. That the city is supposed to take the lead, that that's what we agree.
And and our position is the agreement easily could have been written to say. The parties agree to take care of this bridge jointly, without saying. It's affirmative statement that can I own it, you won't. You didn't have to put that in there, but they said it's the preliminary matter, we agreed we both own it. Then it goes in. To the obligations of the party, so if I was writing that and I wanted to reserve my right to say, I don't own it necessarily, I just want to have a responsibility for it, because it's a public. Bridge. So. It it seems like a court would say that we both have responsibilities to the bridge. And ideally, what we'll do, we'll all agree that that's true, and we'll all reserve our rights to. Whatever we find out as we go forward. I mean, it could be that we put in grants for the two point eight million dollar fix. And we get two point five out of a grant, or a series of grants, and it all adds up to that, and we all are happy, and we all say, well, that's a no brainer, let's do it. If that doesn't happen, then we fall back to whatever our options are available. That's what I think the city's position is. We're not even saying that it's possible, you know. Sweet knowledge of the county's problems, oh, because we have the same wants.
So so I think one of the things that I like about twenty eighteen is that. As we sit here. We don't know what the city's exact position is, I mean, and and I don't know what my board exactly is on that, and if twenty actually calls. Please propose it to me, right? So I would suggest that the city. Make that proposal to the county writing, so we can deliberate, discuss the proposals, because doing it this way, but we don't know. What your council is positioning, and and I don't know what my board is positioning. It is is you and I have a discussion that should be reduced to the right, so that both both points can vote on it, and the people know what to vote on, we don't know.
That can that can happen, but what I what I think it would sound like is something like this. We will, we will agree to seek the very best possible fix for the Dillon Military Bridge. And present it to the county for his consideration. And the county will. Subject to contingency of payment and sufficient grant money and so on and so forth, so that the county can afford it. The county will. If it is reasonable and within their budget, they will agree to go along with it, but nothing. You know, that's what our our proposal would be, is just to make the best jab at it we can and present it to the county. That's all we want at this point, and because all anybody could possibly hope for right now, right? Everyone in this room, all the citizens understand this, that. They wanna keep the grid, but they don't know where they're gonna get the money. So. Right? And and we can do that, we can put a a written proposal to that effect, uh. Your attention, Chris, and you can share it with the board. See what. See what comes with that. And it's not hard for the county to agree, because it wouldn't be hard for the county to agree, because all the county's gonna see is, well, yeah, depends on what they present, but yeah, we'll look at it. That's all we really want.
Again, it's a difficulty of our decisions, right? I mean, you're the city attorney, they hire you. I'm just ever elected, I I can only give them the facts, I can't make a decision for it, that's why. You need to see that in writing, then, yeah, absolutely.
When does that agreement run out?
Uh, I don't know, what's the sunset? I mean, and again, our position is that agreement ran out, we're still agreed, right, so.
It's about the the, with if the county. Notify us that they wanted to terminate.
Uh, but that was the end of the year, this this year, end of this year.
You have, you have notified us of termination, because you notified us of. You changed it from five years to two years. But I don't know that we got notification of termination.
Because you only have to do it six, was it six weeks in advance or six?
What's that?
We we have not notified you to terminate.
And wasn't notification supposed to come like? Beginning of December. And then it would run for two years after that?
No, the way the agreement. Yeah, our, my reading of the allocation is they've been even for five years, and so it's March twenty, twenty twenty seven. That's what I see.
That's the solid expert expiration date.
That that is what, that is how I'm reading right now.
So whatever the, that notification window is, we'll have, you know.
So when did the state get out of it?
Well, that the total current twenty eighty agreement was signed in two thousand and eight.
And they were. And they opted not to be in that twenty eight at that time.
And early on, there was some documented record that. I had seen, those made available, that the the state was basically excusing themselves. From. And. That kicked in, the twenty eighty agreement. Uh, that was signed. By uh Mayor Hatcher. I don't remember who on the council we have, it was.
So I have a question. It's kind of bothering me. Taxpayers here in Anamosa also contributed to county taxes, is that correct?
Yeah.
But we really don't have a say in how you guys spend the money on the county.
Yeah, you do.
If it wasn't bond, they would.
If it wasn't bonding. But here we are as citizens of Anamosa, asking the county to basically help us as a community. And you won't commit. Would that be a fair statement?
We didn't say we wouldn't.
Dan, I think it's more of, we're asking them to fulfill their responsibility, not not help us. It's to fulfill their responsibility.
Hold up, you're into the agreement. I didn't say we wouldn't fulfill the agreement, but I just said if if we're gonna be on the hook for one point four million, don't you think that should be a countywide vote? Because there's gonna be people that are for, obviously in Anamosa area, there's probably people down in Oxford Junction that don't care. And it should be, if you're gonna support your bridge. Stone Bridge. The Fremont Bridge. You know, because each bridge means something to some area. The Fremont Bridge means people, means something to people that camp, it means something to where it came from. Same thing with Stone Bridge. There's people that would come to this meeting. I went to a Stone Bridge meeting two months ago and listened to a lot of the same comments. Each one means something.
Each one means something to everyone, and probably the fairest way, if you're gonna, if we could possibly be on the hook for that much money. The fairest way to do it would be to put it to a vote, just like we done with the Mossel Schools and you guys have done with your schools. That's the fairest way to do it to the whole county, because the whole county's helping to pay for that.
That's in a perfect world too. What what, in a worst case scenario. What happens if the bridge fails and goes into the river? The next flood, and and then and then who who pays for the removal?
Right here.
Okay, so both sides, it's an equal deal. You can agree on on that aspect in a worst case scenario, but not the other, it has to go to a a vote.
I think you're talking a whole different realm of money.
A lot different money.
I think you're going from maybe two hundred thousand to three point million.
My question, but. I'm just, I'm I guess, I'm guessing that it was gonna be fifty fifty on the removal of it. The cost, um, sharing. So it's a little difficult to understand on on a better case scenario, why it has to go to a an accounting vote.
Just a whole different.
A lot more money.
We we as a city. We know that it's a two point eight million dollar fix. And we send it over to the county and say, what do you guys think? That your answer meeting is gonna be unless there's a vote, unless there's, you know. We gotta put the taxpayers to back us on this. The answer's no. City absolutely knows that. So if we can't get a grant amount that gets into a number and it works for the county, it's not gonna happen. Everybody on this side of the table knows that. So. All we're asking for is let's just agree that we'll split whatever it does cost, and you have absolute veto power on your side. Say no to anything against the week. That's the best we can do to, till we find out what's gonna happen. So. I I don't think the county's being unreasonable at all. It doesn't sound unreasonable at all to me, because you don't have enough information to know. If it was gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, it's all the problem was gonna happen today, at the end of the day. To make everybody in this room really happy, you'd probably find a way to get that done somehow. But we just don't know, neither does the city, so. I guess all we're looking for is buying from both sides, and if we got that, then I could, you can, we can find a proposal and send it over for your consideration. And then you've got every right at that point to evaluate, determine the answer's yes or the answer's no, or maybe if this happened, then maybe it would happen, whatever.
Isn't that where we're at, Chris? Is we're waiting for the proposal then?
So we absolutely think we should follow the process of that on the twenty years, we want to do. Uh, so we love this proposal, because that's what we want, we're able to actually lock it up and and decide.
I could imagine something coming over that said, we want this two point eight million dollar fix as a public loss. And if we can get grant money to X dollars, we can be able to.
And you guys will have to do that, because we haven't, we 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 can't do any action tonight, so that's. So that's your, that you gotta do that, come to us.
I think if we, we understand that side, so what we're we're trying to figure out is.
Do we have one point three, one point four million? The answer would be no.
So the city, I I will suggest, recommend to the city, if if they so choose the scene. Because we can take an action. If the if any of these options are viable. We'll put the verbiage together. If that decision is made, send it off to Chris or. The auditor, someone on the county side. That puts that puts the ball in your hands. Again, if. You don't have one point four, one point five million, here's a newsflash, the city doesn't. And if we don't have one point four or five million, we sure as heck don't have two point eight or three million. Uh, it it will be very, it would be very disappointing. If this became a one horse race. Three to five years.
Uh, if the county is trying to stall this, to have this.
Oh, sir, I don't think they're trying to stall.
I thought it was a council meeting, meeting here.
Piece this together.
Legally. You're right, attorney, you're, if this wants to court right now, that agreement. You're both gonna have to pay fifty fifty. He's right.
We believe.
I guarantee that, okay?
I will guarantee.
This attorney wants to have some type of something in writing for the city. We all wanna try to get something done and accomplished. Need this out like. So, then must.
You're going to, we are going to stay on task, so the comments like that can be humorous in nature. But it's not happening in this room this evening.
Here's it out all it possibly. The one button on the bridge side is a tab. The costs associated with that, fifty fifty split to keep that bridge from falling in the river. While you seek the full funding for that, and then. And then find those funds after, would the county have money? Could you pursue keeping that bridge from falling in the river? I think that would.
That that's the way it would work in the private sector, you know, you would just mitigate your losses in a sense. But unfortunately, the public fact, it doesn't work though, it's, you know, in a sense, here's the project.
So. So if we, I'm not at all opposed to sending the proposal. Over to the supervisors to put up their next agenda, but. And maybe I'm the dummy in the room and I'll own up to it, but I I don't know how we, so we get. We would send this proposal over and the supervisors say. Sure, we'll agree to commit that we are. Agreeable that we can each side have veto power over whatever the end result is. We still. Have no direction that we can give our engineer. To get grants so that, because we're gonna come back to the same decision point, that we aren't gonna know anything. We we aren't gonna know anything until we know what direction. We we're gonna go, so we, so all we're gonna do is, well. I I agree, this was a meeting that I looked forward to, because I wanted to have supervisors here, I wanted to have us, I wanted to have a public comment, because. There's four hundred and seventy one signatures and fifty per, fifty people in the room here that are all said. And most of them were city residents that said, this is what we want, so. That will help a decision point from my end. But. To what end? Because we still don't have any way we can direct our. Engineer to say, okay, we're committing. If if the council says, as a city, we're committing to the two point eight million dollar project. Great, then we can start to tell our engineer to start looking at those grants. And at least have some idea moving forward. And have no ability to predict what's gonna happen with the supervisors. But otherwise, we're gonna be back here in another month or six weeks, and we're still gonna be. No place, we we would move no ball forward.
To the existing agreement, see now to pursue the maintenance of that bridge, could the engineer. Acknowledge that it is critical to replace that and to repair that one apartment at least. To stop further risk of deterioration, and isn't the county responsible for fifty percent of that?
We would have to present that to them in writing. They would have to agree to it before we do anything. Because we want to add and add the engineer due to survey. Inspection, add the inspection, presented, asked them to pay half of that bill, and they refused, because it was not presented. To them in writing.
Before was done before you were at and we were at, right?
Right, but they refused to to pay because it was not presented to them.
The city, the lesson the city learned out of that was to. Do the well, to do. To have a, and and so, you know, we we got our. We got our notice that we didn't do it the right way, allegedly, so now we've tried to.
Am I wrong in thinking that that repair of that, you know, state heart decided, that doesn't have resumption. More than that.
I was going to get in touch with the Escan Masters tomorrow to do the inspection while their virginity. Ask further. Based on what they saw a year ago. And try and. Capture what those expenses would be to do that.
Melissa, I have a question. Hold on just a minute. I have a question for you. We did that bridge training that was here a while back, several people did. Uh, so we can come up with uh, from our side and and initiate the proposal that we're gonna send to the supervisors. Based on those options that you set forth. Or something else, uh. Submit that, so we can get that over to the supervisors for their review and deliberation and whatnot. Presumably, they could make a preliminary decision agreeing to that. Uh, to to proceed until we know what funding is coming. And when we get to that point and find out we get nothing, we can all go back to the drawing board and start all over again. Or we can get the funding we thought they're gonna get, everybody can say, yep, sounds good. Let's put something down in writing saying we want to proceed and move forward with this. That sound like something that can happen? So, I I guess that's where I'm at with this, if if we can say this is the direction we wanna go. Get something to them in writing. We we all know where everybody sits on this. It's not a mystery what everybody wants to happen to it. We don't need to keep rehashing that all night long. We know how important this is to everybody.
You guys have this on for action, so what is your option you wanna go with?
That's what I'd like to know.
The for public uh, information, if you hadn't followed the details of it. The the abutment on the south side of the bridge, the river, uh, has deteriorated, uh. The most, where the abutment on the north side, uh, is still. Structurally, I don't wanna use the word sound, but is not to a emergency situation. Pardon?
That's the deep side too, is wants to bend best shape, so even under the water lines. Pretty much wait to see on top.
I'd like to think that's the city's side.
It's actually the county, state side. That's the state side.
I think it's going north and south.
Get that right.
Dan, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to repair the bridge in place.
Have a motion by Dan. Second by Todd. To repair in place. Council, do you need further discussion?
Well, I I do have a question for the person who made the motion. Is that provided that we get grant money or? We're doing it as if, I guess, what, where are you going?
Well, I would say that grant money is very important with this project. But either way, I feel we should save this bridge.
Sure. Depending upon the available funds, present the same as the county, repair the bridge in place.
I would agree to that motion.
Further, further discussion. Okay. Haley, would you conduct a roll vote for the city on the motion on the floor?
Hey, Smith?
Yeah.
Tuchan?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Absolutely.
Gamber?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Motion, uh, to approve proceeding with proposal, hearing unanimous. You.
So we will write up the written proposal to present to them. For that, you, or Jeremiah. We can work together and work with.
But I think, would you? Patrick, Jeremiah, when when do you think the uh. Supervisors of the county could expect that proposal? I don't know, kind of putting on a spot here.
Oh, I think. Ten days or something like that, we'll get something together. It's gonna be relative in general with nature, you know. Well, we have a lot of good material we can attach, obviously, to show you what we have in mind, and then we'll. It'll be somewhat general, because it'll be contingent on. When grant money, right, same. But it will be concrete enough that you'll know what we're asking.
Jeremiah is asking for two weeks, fourteen weeks.
All right.
Melissa, uh, obviously, they're gonna need. You your involvement there, are you okay with that? Thank you. All right. For those that remain, I very much should say I, council, county appreciates. You taking time out of your busy schedule to see me, uh, to come for and offer up your view, your the feedback. Uh, was important to the decision. We will continue to work lightly to get uh, get this to the finish line. Uh, but it it's, again, as you can tell, it's not something that's gonna move quickly. It is gonna be a slow, methodical process. That's all I think I have. Five point zero adjournment. Seeing these meetings adjourned. You didn't say anymore.